Good evening, welcome to the October 7th, 2015 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval for our minutes. We had three of them scheduled for tonight, but I think we've only got a quorum for the last set, which is from September 16th. So is there a motion please?
Ms. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of September 16th, 2015 as read into the record.
Second. It's moved in second, and I'll favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passage unanimously. We did have a record plat on the agenda that was published, and I understand it's being deferred, so we'll move on to a recommendation of the mayor and council, which is for an annexation X-7089-2015, and Trudy Schor from staff will be introducing that.
Good evening, planning commissioners. As John stated, I am Trudy Schor, City Planning Manager. If you could turn your attention to the monitor, tonight's meeting is part one of a two-part process for the Planning Commission for their recommendation to the mayor and city council concerning the annexation petition X-7089-2015 for the property known as Potomac Valley Shopping Center South. Tonight is a public discussion to allow testimony to the Planning Commission from the public concerning the petition. On Wednesday, October 21st, the Planning Commission will discuss the recommendation, and there will not be public testimony at that time. The mayor and city council will conduct a public hearing on the same subject on November 16th, 2015, and the public will again have the opportunity to testify. Additional written testimony can always be submitted via email to planning@plancode@gaitersburgmd.gov or via regular mail to City Hall until the record of the application is closed. The exhibits that are part of the petition can also be viewed at the city's website under the City Projects page, which is called Potomac Valley Shopping Center Annexation. The annexation process is outlined in the Annotated Code of Maryland Local Government Article, and also Chapter 24 of the City Code requires that the Planning Commission review the proposed annexation and associated rezoning and land use plan for consistency with the city's master plan, and provide a recommendation to the mayor and city council at least 15 days prior to the mayor and city council public hearing. The mayor and city council are required to hold a public hearing prior to making a final decision on the requested annexation and zoning. As mentioned before, the scheduled public hearing for the mayor and council is November 16th.
And I guess that anticipates or is expecting that there won't be a work session, and we'll go straight through the two public hearing processes and...
A work session by the mayor and city council?
Yeah, or joint...
Well, the public hearing would, they would have their public hearing, then a lot of times they'll do a work session.
Okay, so there's still a possibility.
Right. The property for X-7089-2015 is known as the Potomac Valley Shopping Center South, and it's in the southwest corner of Gaithersburg, at the intersection of Route 28 or Darnstown Road and Route 124, Quince Orchard Road. The acreage of the annexation is 8.28 acres of land. The property is shown within the city's maximum expansion limits as adopted in the city by the municipal growth element of the 2003 master plan. Exhibit 2J is in the record and shows the expansion limits on a larger map, and specifically on page 56 shows the property as part of the maximum expansion limits. The property is currently located in Montgomery County and is zoned NR 0.75, which stands for Neighborhood Retail with .75 FAR. The applicant is requesting to zone the property to the MXD Zone. Whoops. The surrounding land uses include Quince Orchard High School to the west, Quince Orchard Library to the south, the Montgomery County Fire and Rescue Station 31 to the east, the Potomac Valley Shopping Center north, which is in the city limits, to the north. The city's 2009 land use plan, also part of Exhibit 2J, shows both the shopping center to the north and the shopping center to the south to be zoned MXD. Please note that the staff analysis had an error in it. It said that it was, that the recommendation was for the CD and MXD Zone. It is only for the MXD Zone, and we apologize for that. This drawing outlines the boundary of the property and the road rights of way. The current shopping center contains 4.67 acres, and the road rights of way approximately 3.61 acres. The roadways, Maryland Route 28 or Darnstown Road, and Maryland 124 will continue to be maintained by the State Highway Administration. The shopping center contains 39,097 gross square feet of commercial uses. The following maps and photos show some of the buildings and the uses. From this direction of Route 28, you can see the gas station, the bank, and the McDonald's and its drive-through. From this direction, which is closer in the shopping center, you can see the retail strip center and some of the offices. And then looking at this direction, you can see the two-story portion of the shopping center, which has instructional uses such as a driving school, ballet tutoring, and also they're looking for instructional use such as a co-man, that kind of tutoring. Since the request is for the MXD Zone, in accordance with the 2009 land use element of the master plan, the applicant has submitted a sketch plan in accordance to the requirements of the MXD zoning as part of the petition. And with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Casey Cerner from Miles and Stockbridge, who is representing the applicants.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. For the record, Casey Cerner with Miles and Stockbridge, here on behalf of the co-petitioners, Darnstown Valley WHMLP and Darnstown Valley Petroleum LLC. With me in the audience is Bill McGruder, representative of the co-petitioners, as well as Kevin Mack, who is from Dewberry, the consulting firm that prepared the drawings. So the co-petitioners have filed this petition to annex the Potomac Valley Shopping Center South and adjacent right-of-way into the city, as well as requesting a simultaneous reclassification of the property to the MXD Zone. The petition is consistent with the city's master plan and aligns with the city's future vision in accordance with those master plan documents for two main reasons. First, the subject property is located within the maximum expansion limits as set forth in the Municipal Growth Element, and that's pages 22 and 56 of that element. And the city's land use plan also recommends MXD classification for the property following annexation. Now currently, the subject property is located in the county, and it's zoned, as Trudy mentioned, in the NR Neighborhood Retail .75 FAR and 45 height zone. You will note that the county's master plan, the Potomac Subregion Master Plan, recommends the C1 zoning for the property. However, back in 2014, the county eliminated the C1 zone and replaced it with the NR zone, and that was part of the comprehensive amendment to the county zoning ordinance, among some, a lot of other changes to the zoning ordinance. The existing NR zone and the proposed MXD zone are very similar. They both have a .75 FAR, and they both allow similar uses. In fact, the existing uses at the shopping center are permitted by right in the MXD zone, and some of those existing uses are drive-throughs, McDonald's and the Wendy's, M&amp;T Bank, retail, commercial office, and instructional and tutoring uses. So the co-petitioners intend on operating the shopping center following annexation, and with that, they've submitted the existing conditions plan that sets forth the shopping center as it is today, and also submitted a conceptual sketch plan that provides for the uses following redevelopment, and those uses are recommended in the land use plans and our commercial and commercial office focus. The co-petitioners are subsidiaries of the McGruder Companies. It's a local, family-owned and operated business. They've actually, in fact, are the 14th generation property owner in Montgomery County, and they own the Potomac Valley Shopping Center North, which is across the street, and that's the shopping center with the Starbucks. It is currently in the city's limits in Zone C1. It's about six and a half acres, and is recommended for reclassification to the MXD Zone. So in essence, this annexation petition is really reconnecting two parts of a shopping center to allow their comprehensive redevelopment under a single set of zoning development standards. And that will also allow for development of two landmark properties at the intersection of Darnstown and Quince Orchard Road. And there are a few other benefits to this, and the timing of the annexation, and I was going to ask Mr. McGruder to address those, as to why we are undertaking the annexation at this time, both for practical and short-term benefit reasons.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, Bill McGruder with the McGruder Companies and the owners of Potomac Valley Shopping Center. As quickly as I can say it, in 2009, when we realized that this annexation was actually something that the city was looking at, wanting to entertain, as well as the changeover to MXD on both sides of the street, we were excited to see the possibility of that in the future, and for two, for two basic reasons, and the basic reasons why we've pursued this annexation and rezoning. For many years, and since we've owned the shopping center since, I believe, 1984, both sides of the center have been in two municipalities. Not a, not a deal breaker in any means, but a cumbersome process to have to deal with when, when dealing with permitting and different things of that nature. The opportunity to have both sides in one municipality, and especially having them both in the city of Gaithersburg, which we have a long history and have had a, had a very good history with, was a very positive change for us. So in the short term, the benefits for us are having, having both, both sides of the street in the same municipality, for practical reasons more than anything, but also for the relationship that we have maintained with the city up until this point, and for many years. For the long term, that's a little less specific. The opportunity to react to the market in a quick manner when the time is right, and when, when, when we look at our timeframe, the horizon of 20 years is probably somewhere where we would even consider the possibility of, of redevelopment happening, maybe, maybe beyond that. We're still signing 10-year leases, so we have no intentions of doing anything anytime soon. I don't think that the economic landscape there is even close to, to what it would need to be for us to redevelop. So, but when the time, when the time comes, we would much rather be developing the property as one piece, whether it's, they're done simultaneous or not, they'll, they'll, they'll be designed to, to complement each other, and I think this is the best way that we can do that. We also, we'll be able to react the best way we can by already having this process done when the time comes. That's, that's an exciting prospect for us in the long term. So as of right now, I couldn't tell you what that structure would be, but, but I look forward to, when the time comes, working with the city to, to figure out what the best outcome would be.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go too much further, would you mind just stepping through the sketch plan real quick, just for anybody looking in for the first time?
Sure.
Just run down what exactly is being proposed as part of the rezoning, or excuse me, the annexation. And Trudy, can you get that up on the screen? Okay, thanks.
So the sketch plan proposes the commercial focus for the portion of the shopping center that abuts Route 28. And then to the rear of the shopping center property will be an office commercial focus, and we're estimating about 50,000 to 95,000 square feet of use. And for the commercial focus to the front, we're estimating approximately 60,000 to 100,000 square feet of use.
Okay, so for relative comparison, do you know, I know it's, it's currently zoned for a .75 FAR. Do you know it's developed on the site now?
There's currently slightly less than 40,000 square feet.
So what does that calculate to, for, do you know?
I don't know offhand, but I'm happy to look at that and submit something into the record.
I think if you could just understand the potential for the site under its current, current zoning, and then if brought in under MXD, to be clear, that would be subject to an SDP or a plan before any, any particular capacity would be approved, but, you know, it's not really FAR per se, but it'd be nice to know kind of for comparison, what's there versus what's allowed currently by right or by, by zone, county zone, and then that gives us a sense of scale for what's being proposed on the, on the sketch plan as well, I think.
Sure, we will analyze that and...
Both, both the MXD and the Neighborhood Retail have a .75 FAR max density.
Right.
So it's the same, the same density.
I think my point is, it wouldn't necessarily be .75 as an MXD project. It would be whatever the SDP proposed.
Well, that, right now, the zone only allows you to go to .75.
Oh, no, I understand that, but the, but the actual, what would be developed would be part of that plan or part of the SDP process, and it'd be, it'd be interesting to know what, what that looks like in terms of capacity or current, current versus potential. All right, I'm sorry, it probably cut you off in the middle of a thought, so...
No, no, that's okay. I was just going to highlight some of the points that we made in the MXD justification statement that was submitted with the annexation package that addresses the findings that need to be made in order to reclassify the property to MXD. And that, those are that the application meets the objectives and purposes of the MXD Zone, which is really implementation of the master plan, and this application does that by requesting annexation of property that's located within the maximum expansion limits, as well as reclassifying it to the MXD Zone in accordance with the recommendations of the land use plan. Additionally, we're working with staff on finalizing an annexation agreement that will include development standards that mirror the footprint of the existing shopping center, and so inherently, the future development will be compatible with the surrounding area since it mirrors what's actually there. And finally, the redevelopment will be compatible and harmonious, because as Mr. McGruder indicated, the redevelopment will be part of a comprehensive redevelopment with the north side of the shopping center, and so that will allow both of the developments to be compatible, and they're compatible with the existing uses, which are primarily institutional and commercial uses that surround it. So just in closing, the proposed annexation is consistent with the master plan. It's within the MEL, and because it's within the maximum expansion limits, it was analyzed with regard to the adequate public facilities, and since police service is really the only facility that's, will be extended to this property following annexation, the annexation will have a very minimal effect on the city as well as the city residents. So we're asking the Planning Commission to look favorably upon our application.
Good, thank you. Trudy, one other question about the process. If this moves forward and is annexed and then is an MXD Zone, there are some individual buildings on the site, too. It's not one contiguous shopping center per se. Those could be redeveloped individually, I guess, if the market called for it, or a tenant asked for it, or the, the owners wanted to, right? I mean, it wouldn't call into question a whole comprehensive plan necessarily, or would it need to?
It would, we would certainly want to see the overall plan, because they're, each of those pad sites are integral to the shopping center with all their access points. So I think we would do an SD, ask for an SDP overall.
For the whole thing?
But, it's, you know, two of the properties are owned by the applicant, and then one property is owned by the bank. Is that correct?
That's correct. So economically, it probably would make more sense for the bank property to join in with the two larger properties for comprehensive redevelopment.
That's the kind of top right of that plan, I guess.
That's correct. This right here. All the other property is, belongs to the McGruder Companies.
So is there any conversation about that now, or is that, is that being talked about at all?
No, as Mr. McGruder said, they're looking 20 years out.
Right, okay.
I had a question about traffic flow and parking. Now, I understand that, I guess there are 238 parking spaces, and using our, our ordinance, it's 166. Does that mean that there, once this if is approved, that'll, there'll be some reconfiguration needed for the parking space? And the other thing about that area is, you know, my, my kids went to school right across the street, so we spend a lot of time in that area. Is the flow of traffic, there's just like, to me, it's almost like two or three different driving flows in that area. Has, has the city looked at that, and, and is there anything that they think might be an issue?
We really haven't looked at the site plan to analyze it, because it's an existing plan.
Okay.
So that's not, we, we will evaluate to make sure that there's the correct number of accessible spaces on the site. That's the only thing that we want to double-check, that is part of the annexation.
Okay, but, I mean, so there'll be, I mean, I knew, I think there was a traffic study or, well, not, a traffic impact analysis, but there hasn't been a traffic study or anything like that about, in access and ingress into that, that space yet?
No, that would not be required until they did some sort of redevelopment.
Okay, all right.
Going from the C1 on Potomac Valley North to an MXD in the future, what would that involve, and what, what kind of timeframe are we talking about, something like that, to go from MXD, from C1 to MXD, and basically, if it is the same, it's FAR-wise, .75, and so on and so forth? Why, what, what was the analysis for a C1 rather than an MXD?
That property has been C1 probably since it was annexed in 1969. The master plan recommended the MXD, but as you may recall, the mayor and council chose not to do a comprehensive rezoning in accordance with the master plan. So the process would be, either the city would do a comprehensive rezoning at some point, or the applicant would come in with a rezoning request. And those applications generally take four to six months for review. It would come in with a concept plan, I mean, a conceptual sketch plan, sorry, for, for the city's review, and the mayor and council and the Planning Commission would evaluate that on the requirements at that time.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So the, we're in step one, right? Phase one, so we're looking for comment from the public. Is there anyone that would like to testify or comment on this application? Well, I don't see anybody popping up out of their chair for this one. So what's next, Trudy?
Staff would recommend that you hold the record open for eight days until October 15th, and then we will bring this back to you on October 21st.
For a recommendation?
For a recommendation.
Okay. And then after that, as you said in the earlier schedule, the mayor and council would then have a public hearing.
Yes. And just for everyone's information, this also will be reviewed by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning, Montgomery Planning Board, for the requirements of annexation, as to make a decision, or their recommendation to the county council as to whether this is a substantial change or not.
Sure, sure. Okay, good. Well, staff has recommended that we hold the record open for eight days and close at 5:00 PM on October 15th. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and I'll favor, please say aye. Aye. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to the next, next steps in that process. All right. That takes us to our site plan agenda, and there's one tonight, which is for AFP-7137-2015, the Sealy's Mediterranean Grill and Restaurant, or Grill Restaurant in the MXD Zone at 705 Center Point Way. This is amendment to final site plan and modifications to the existing exterior architecture, and presenting from staff is Greg Mann. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening. This application is for AFP-7137-2015. Request an approval for modifications to the existing exterior architecture. The subject property is located at 705 Center Point Way within Collins Market Square and is zoned MXD. Here tonight is the applicant's contractor, Mr. Khalid Javed, to present the application and answer any questions the commission may have.
Great, good evening.
Good evening. So it's only exterior, we're changing now, I mean, right where it's existing restaurant, and we have to make a new storefront with a glass, and this is right now is like a stucco, so we want to remove the stucco, we want to put like a brick, so it look good.
Sure. Greg, we have that in our packet, maybe you could pull, there, that's good. Show it for everyone to see. I also, it appears, too, that you're reorienting the main entrance into the building to the corner from the original kind of centered, centered on the, on the plaza.
Actually, it's all three-sided.
It's three-sided? Oh, well, yeah, you're adding glass.
Yeah, the main entrance.
Which is good, I mean, I appreciate that, but I just want to note that the actual entrance, main entrance to the restaurant is being relocated out closer to the street, which is...
Yes, that would relocate.
Which I think is appropriate, yeah, okay.
I have a question regarding the, there's another tenant that's in that building, actually, that physical building. Has that tenant been informed of these changes, or is that tenant being involved at all?
Yes. It's already informed of. There's only one, one tenant.
Right, there is one other tenant, right, that's, besides facilities.
Exactly.
Okay, that's, we'll talk about that later then, okay.
And the canopy, is that proposed to be year-round? It won't be taken down, you know, in the wintertime or anything like that?
The existing canopy will be all removed.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the proposed canopy.
Oh, this one, it's just like, some metal tubes, we have to weld them and just paint it.
But the material, is that a cloth material, or?
No, it's just all...
Okay, okay.
It's a sheet.
Okay, I couldn't tell what it was. Okay.
So Greg, I have a kind of a context question here. It was noted in either the Town Courier or one of the local papers that there was some potential that Beatty would be putting the center up for sale. So where does that, what's the status of this building in that overall picture?
That, I, it's within the Beattie's property. I don't know what their, what their, what their future plans are, though.
So this is a tenant improvement project? This really isn't being, ownership isn't transferring to, to you all or to anybody else at this point?
Right.
It's still a Beatty building, okay. Just to be clear.
Glad you did that.
All right. Any other questions for the...
No.
No?
No, let's...
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment?
Sure.
Come on up. The way we do this is, there's three minutes to speak. You come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and share your thoughts, please.
Good evening, anyone? My name is Mike Parknagger. I represent the, another tenant in the back, Don Capos Cafe. And I have a couple of questions, because it's in my building, it affects me directly. Mainly, I was never contacted, no meeting, no discussion, no nothing with, for this thing, all these changes. Once the sign went up for this meeting, that's when I came to the city hall, and I looked at the drawing and all that, what they're planning to do. I just want to know, what are they doing? How long is it going to take? How is it going to affect my business?
May I ask you a question on, on your question about being notified? Are you, are you, are you a tenant to Beatty, or are you a sub-tenant or a sub-lessee to those?
I'm a tenant to Beatty.
Okay.
I have a 10-year lease, five and five.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
And I just want to know how is it going to affect my business? Am I closing? How long the construction is going to take? I sell all different kind of food. Am I going to be looking like a Greek Mediterranean out from outside? And all those kind of things, I need the answer. I was not invited to any discussion or meeting or anything.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question. I appreciate your, your concerns, but did you have a question for the applicant or staff?
Basically, how long is it going to take? How is it going to affect me? Am I closing the place, or what are we doing? And how is it going to look like in the end?
Okay.
It's going to look like, what kind of food I'm selling, or is it going to look like Mediterranean or what?
Okay.
That's all.
Great, thank you. So maybe Greg, you could jump in with a couple of the process questions. The first was, if, if, if the building will be closed to the other tenant while the construction's going on, does anybody have a sense of that for phasing or staging? going on, does anybody have a sense of that for phasing or staging?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure the whole building will be closed because he's at the corner, and he can run his business, but we have to put like a barricade all around because we're, once we have a demolition, we don't want any debris to go outside.
Sure. Now, the improvements to the building include the corner with the other tenant, is that correct?
Right.
Yes, the exterior, okay. So, when that work is being done, is, will provisions be made to maintain access to the, to the door, to the, however the business is configured? I don't actually know if he needs to, a window or a door or whatever, but.
That's primarily an outdoor business, though, as I recall.
As I told you, this is at, just at the corner, at the end.
Right.
So, I mean, that will be not that much disturbance. Maybe we can do the rest area first, and then we can disturb that part, and it might take like a few days.
Is there a representative from the landlord here?
Yes, the property manager.
There's, oh, can I ask a question or two of you, please?
Sure.
And if you would introduce yourself at the mic, please.
Brian Rosenberg, Principal Broker, Beatty Companies.
Okay. So, step me through the process for, now, obviously, the building is vacant right now, so this is a new tenant that's.
Except for them.
Well, no, for the, the work that's being presented tonight is by a new tenant, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, at what point is, I'm trying to, trying to understand a little better how you all granted permission for this and how you notified other tenants, or how all that was plugged, plugged into this, this process?
Okay, so, this was a lease that we made with Vasilius, and part of the terms of that lease are that we're making a contribution, the physical work is being conducted by the tenant.
Okay.
So, we'll certainly be involved from, from a supervisory capacity, but in terms of the actual work getting done, the tenant is taking, taking care of it.
Okay, so, so was the tenant notified, the other tenant notified that this would be happening?
I thought so. I, you know, they're, they're here, they're saying no, but I, I was on the impression that they were.
So have you met with them to discuss logistics of access to the business?
I have not.
Okay. Whose responsibility is that?
Suspect is property manager.
Alright, okay, so, tell me again, your role?
Broker, principal broker. I'm the leasing agent.
And you work for whom?
Beatty Companies.
Okay. So, is the property manager Beatty, or is it somebody else?
Absolutely, it's Beatty, yes.
Okay.
It wouldn't be me personally, is what I see.
So you can understand how, right now, I think I'm asking too many questions. So explain it again, how do you all communicate with your tenants that something like this is happening?
Well, again, I, I handle leasing at the center, we have somebody else that's involved with the management of the shopping center and tenant coordination. That person should be in touch with them to let them know exactly what's going on. If they didn't already.
It's not a very big company, is it?
No.
Okay. Alright. Let's, let's button that up as soon as we can, okay? Can, can you, can you take that back to the company at large and figure out what, what's going on with the communication channels there?
Absolutely, again, I thought that.
We shouldn't be looking at a plan for, this is actually a wonderful project, I have to say, but we shouldn't be hearing that, that somebody who's a tenant of the building doesn't even know what's happening.
You're right, and I wasn't aware of that. I completely thought that that had happened before.
Okay, alright. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions for the?
No, there's so many people, more public.
Yeah. You know, I'm sorry, I got off track. So, that was the contact, the closing piece, we have to address the phasing or the staging, I think, we had to make sure, Greg, that's on the list of very specific things to, to figure out. Okay, and the other question was what, what this building will look like, right? Or what, what this will look like after the renovation, is that, I think what you asked me to during the hearing?
No, the incompatibility is what he's concerned about.
So Greg, would you, would you pull up, please, the, the elevations that show, I think there's a couple of perspectives, there might be an elevation of the corner, the other corner, yeah, let's see.
You're talking about the corner where Pepper's is?
Yes, yeah.
It's, sorry, I'm on this, oops, elevation. So this is their, their current corner with the sliding windows, service windows.
Okay, so that bay, that, that entire bay would be what, the equivalent of what's, what's there now for, for their front edge, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Or is it part of it?
I, I believe it's from the over.
Okay.
This would be Pepper's.
Now, I know in the packet there were some rendered views as well, does that show up in any of the rendered views?
Let me, you can kind of see it in this northeast.
Okay, good.
Corner.
So it, it carries a little bit of the character of the center and maybe a little bit more of a, of a, a regional look to it, but not necessarily a, a look that's, that's unique or particular to the, to the restaurant theme itself. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we've got to work out staging on it. Alright, any other, any other testimony or comments from the audience? No? Okay. Oh, sure, yes ma'am, please.
Definitely.
Come on up to the mic, because we have to record the comments. It's, don't be afraid of the mic, it's just so we can record the comments.
Okay.
And please, please say your name and address.
My name is Jyoti, I own that business, Peppers, and it's my husband. My question is, this all looks wonderful, it's all good, but the point is going to be all glass, it's look like this one single piece, you know, my one restaurant. It's not look like, it's like two. I'm already having a big trouble, like, even we are one and a half year, we're there, people stay to be part of diner, or the diner lease, or something like that. And what I'm seeing here is, is going to be look like one thing, you know, I mean, if I see the Vassali sign, but how is it going to be my sign? I mean, there's so many question, and it's going to be all glass, to up to down that, you can see in the picture. So, how is it going to be, because Vassali is a restaurant, they have inside the kitchen. So when my customers see, what they're going to be see, the precinct, or the steam table, or, I mean, or the, you know, cashier, so how is it going to be, look like to my place because it's open for all, all the way to both corners.
Sure, okay.
So, I want to know what's exactly, it's going to be.
Okay. I think what I need to recommend is, without maybe getting too deep into the planery tonight, or an actual planery, is maybe make sure, Greg, you can meet with them and walk through the, the proposed plans and capture whatever concerns there are, so, so the Vasilius team, architect can, can address whatever those questions are, whether it's facade treatment or screening or access points, things like that. We can wrap that into discussion, but I think generally, we need to get a meeting between you all to get into the detail a bit, a bit. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, alright.
I, I have to say, while I'm excited about this plan, I don't think it's ready for us if the tenant doesn't.
Let's finish the hearing and then go to discussion. I was, what I was really doing is making sure we didn't get too deep into answering a lot of specific questions that might, might better be worked on in the meeting.
Alright, I'll defer.
But I'll, I'll give you first.
I'll defer my comments.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the audience, please? Anybody? Okay. Alright, so Greg, the recommendation then is?
Staff recommends that the planning commission grant AFP 7137-2015 amendment to final site plan, finding it in conformance of section 24-170 and 24-172 of the city zoning ordinance with one condition.
Okay, and that's about the signs. Okay, go ahead, yeah.
No, I, I'm happy to, to, to support the granting of the AFP, but I, I don't think it's quite ready if the existing tenant has a lot of questions, and it seems like they have a lot of questions. And it seems like there just needs to be an opportunity for a meeting to get some, some, some questions and concerns addressed. That's just my comment.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I would tend to agree with Danny. I, I have some trepidation about where we are right now. I think the process is on an express track in certain respects, and yet it's, it's dragging along a lot of baggage.
Right. And not that there's anything wrong with the redevelopment, I love that, or whatever.
No, no.
Not at all, that has nothing to do with it.
No, it's, I agree. So how do we move on, Mr. Chairman?
Would you, could we go ahead? Would you consider a condition that the applicant provide a phasing plan prior to the issuance of the building?
There's actually a couple parts, yeah, I think so. I was going to propose a phasing plan, I was also going to propose that, that within the next 30 days, staff and the tenant and the landlord meet to resolve whatever questions and details there are.
The current tenant?
Yeah, exactly, I'm sorry, yeah. Because I am concerned that the facade doesn't really reflect, it probably reflects the Vasilius business in terms of programming and what was expected, but it doesn't seem to reflect the existing operations on site. And, sure.
I have a comment for that.
Well, please, come on.
Hello, my name is Theo Krasopoulos, and I'm representing Vasilius Mediterranean Grill as co-owner. For Peppers, so that you guys will know, just a question that I've had in mind for a long time, because I don't know what Peppers, I didn't know what it was because it looked like a diner. So I always assumed it was like breakfast food or stuff like that. I feel this design of the building is not only going to help brand what they have and what they're selling to their customers, better than what it has now as a diner, but it'll also help us. So that's why we stuck with a very neutral brick look instead of going white and blue, and, I mean, we really were thinking about Peppers when we did choose that design. So, do want you to know that. And that was my comment for today.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's a perfect example, though, of the fact that we're having a dialogue going on here in front of us, rather than having, have this dialogue prior to coming before us. And that's what concerns us, I think, at least.
It's not, it's not the.
Let me clarify this, but I agree with you, I think there's a, there's a lack of communication. I don't think it's the applicant's fault. I think, I think it's actually, so I don't want to, I don't want to put them in the position of any, any, any issues or any problems with moving their project forward.
Right, I agree.
Because I know there's some things probably contingent on this, like financing and other things, so, but I do want to make sure that we have good solid coordination between the existing tenant, the architecture and how it's, how it's resolved at the facade, whether it's access points or wall treatments, whatever it might be, programmatically it works with what's there. And ultimately, that as it gets built out, the phasing doesn't do anything to undermine the business that is already open and operating there. And I, I think that can all be handled, that, that's beyond a site plan issue, frankly, that's really part of what has to happen next, if it moves forward. So, I'd be comfortable with, with approving it with the condition that addresses those three things, if you want.
I'm comfortable, but I'd even go a little further, that, that we have staff reach out to Beatty or whomever is that person who should be the, doing that coordinating, make sure that they understand that that is a part of this process.
Right.
And, you know, just remind them that, that that's a part of the process, and so we don't get into these situations.
That's fair, that's fair.
Is that something we could do?
And I'm going to trust the representative in Beatty will take this message back and be sure there's good solid communication with the, with the tenants after this. Because clearly, it hasn't happened so far.
And Greg will give him his card so that he can email us back with what he has found out.
Good.
Okay, that's good.
So proposing three, three, three conditions, a phasing plan, and that's really just staff authority, we don't need to bring it back here, but the idea is to ensure continuity of, of business operations with the existing tenant. Architectural details that, that respects and supports whatever the existing operations are on site. And I had a third one, and I just want to write it ahead, what was it?
We still have the sign, the sign is the third one.
The sign is already on there. Which, by the way, really needs to incorporate Peppers, I think.
Right, that's a good, yeah, that's, that's true.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry?
No, you said something.
No, I'm, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I guess it's really just those two additional.
Yeah, the coordinate signage?
Right. Yeah, but that's already on here.
Okay, yeah.
Does that make sense, Greg?
Yeah.
Any questions from anybody? Any additional comments or concerns? So, so I have to say this, by the way, nice job with the design of the building. Congratulations, that's, it's really going to be a nice project for that, that market square.
And this is in no way trying to, to impede what you're trying to do, but we have to be respectful of who's there and what's there, and that coordination has to happen, so we don't come back and we don't end up in court and all this other stuff. We're trying to, you know, make sure that those things don't happen, okay? So, we're not, yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Marty Frank, any, any concerns? You're looking at me like you might have a concern. No?
No, I think that's great, and we'll, we'll make sure that, that you guys get copied on, on the resolutions that we, that we hear.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, is there a motion, please? Staff is recommending approval with one condition, I've proposed two additional ones. Is there a motion?
Can we just read those conditions?
I'm sorry, what? Do the conditions, you, are you good? Oh, yeah, do you want to go ahead?
I'm sorry, I.
Paraphrase the conditions for the record.
Oh, so, we have this, the future signage is one still, and then applicants submit phasing plan for staff to review prior to issuance of building permit?
Yeah, but I want that to read to, to ensure continuity of operations for the existing tenant.
Okay. And then the other one was to, applicants to submit architectural details incorporating tenant, current tenant to be reviewed by staff prior to issuance of building permit.
Right. I, I want to make sure that there, there is going to be a meeting within current tenant between the two.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's very clear.
I will, I will give them my business card right after this meeting.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
And the signage amendment would also include the Peppers restaurant as well.
Right.
So it's a signage for the entire building?
Yeah. Both would need to come in as separate sign permits at a later date.
So, excellent. So does that make sense?
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay, and I, and I don't think we have any architectural concerns because I think it's, it's a really well-done job to open up the building and address the street and do all the ones that I think we're probably missing the first time around for that building. So good work. Alright, so is there a motion, please?
I move that we grant AFP 7137-2015 amendment to final plan, finding it in conformance with sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city's ordinance with the three conditions written to the record.
Second.
It's moving in second, I don't want to bear, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passing down, see. Thanks very much, congratulations, good luck.
So everybody gets something.
Alright, that takes us to, from the commission, Danny, can I start with you tonight, please?
Okay, we, we, just, just, we have Oktoberfest coming up, and I'm looking forward to that. I haven't been in a few years, and I'm going to go, and I'm not a.
You're going to wear your lighter hosen?
Well, I don't know about that, but I'm going to go.
Later, later.
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 See you later.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
But I'm looking forward to that. I think it's really great when we do these community-type things, and get the community out, and get people engaged in all of their houses. And then we have the planning commission, I mean, I guess you'll talk about that, Trudy, about the planning commission's events coming up at the end of the month. And, as you know, I'm on the executive board, and I'll be participating in that, and I'm looking forward to that. That's it for me.
All right, Lloyd, anything to add?
No, just one second, what Danny said about the Oktoberfest, starts at noon, it's in Kentlands, and it's throughout the Kentlands, starting at the shopping center, by Kentlands Boulevard, running all the way back to the Arts Barn, and the Green, and the Mansion. And everybody's welcome, and it's usually a very well-attended, and I think the weather's supposed to be another excellent weekend, so.
Good.
Look forward to it.
Good news, thanks. All right, so from staff, who wants to jump in first?
Sure. You all have received in your packet a copy of the color version, the more complete version of our 2014 annual planning report.
Yes, indeed.
And I first want to give credit where credit is due, Greg and Kurt and the rest of the staff did a great job with this, and had it done a little while ago, and have been waiting on me for certain parts of it, and I apologize. Next year, we'll be sure to have this annual planning report to you before October of the next year, so.
We can start working on this on 2015, a couple of months.
So, we'll get moving on that a little bit faster next year. So I think this is, includes the worksheet that we put together for the state, but also has a lot more information. I wanted to give you all the opportunity, it's not on the agenda for any official action, however, we most certainly can entertain, if you're ready to tonight, you know, some sort of acknowledgement of the report, acceptance of the report. Or if there's comments and things you want us to fix, we can bring it back at the next planning commission, and I'll leave that up to your pleasure. I did want to make note that we did add a section that was not included in last year's planning report, just called "moving forward." In trying to draft that section, we really wanted to stick with what we had already submitted for the strategic plan for the city.
Sure.
And so, but I did add some, the last paragraph of that, alluding to some of the conversations we've had about transportation issues that are coming up, and gonna be more at the forefront going forward this next year. I think as we get into, in the next couple of months, starting out the new strategic plan for fiscal year 2017, which happens mostly in the spring. But we'll start probably bringing that to you around the first of the year. And so I think this has been a good exercise, because I think going into that strategic plan for next year for the city, we'll be kind of keeping this format in mind as we put together those elements, and kind of look at it more cohesively. I don't think that's, you know, they've kind of been two separate things in the past, and I think we want to start looking at all those long-range planning efforts as kind of one cohesive thing.
When does the state, when do you have to turn the state questionnaire in?
So the state has switched, and this is something that we can bring you back some more complete information on, but last year, the state did pass some legislation moving from a six-year master plan cycle to a 10-year master plan.
Oh, not talking about the annual landing report, the questionnaire.
So the worksheet that we do is part of that whole process. What they're requiring from us now is a fairly comprehensive five-year report, on top of a 10-year, you know, whenever we're, you know, switching over the cycle. So those are due at the fiscal year, the end of the fiscal year, so July 1st, basically. But we are still kind of diving into the one-year, the five-year, the 10-year, and what's required for each of those. So you may see a more complete report in a year or two, as we hit that five-year deadline. Rob, Robinson, our long-range planning manager, is also really diving into those new legislative changes, and there may be a couple of elements that we haven't addressed before that are going to need to be addressed in the future. And those may come to you, you know, at any time to kind of weigh in on filling those gaps.
So what I'm thinking is, if we owe the state a report or questionnaire, or whatever you call it, July 1, right, then it would make sense for that to coincide, for our own planning report to coincide, and maybe that's also a timing consistent with when we might do planning awards, for example. So we might look at like a, you know, let's keep it on May 2, kind of timeframe for awards, and then turn around and dump it all into a report that can be issued mid-year, that coincides with what has to be sent to the state. And then that seems to kind of line up against everybody focusing on what's happened, right, as opposed to fracturing that stuff across a year. Because there's probably a tendency for a planning report for a given year to come out like in February or something, you know. But, you know, as a practical matter, if the work is really being done for the state questionnaire, and more comprehensive technical documents, we might as well get it all lined up together.
Yep, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And it would help staff not have to keep looking at stuff three different ways, different times during the year, right, so.
Well, and I think, you know, and you can see with this report, it would be nice if our applications all followed a nice, were started and completed within one year. But they rarely work out that way.
That's fair.
So I think, you know, looking at it as kind of a point in time, and all of these efforts kind of, yeah.
And so if we aim for, let's, and it's not too soon to think about this, but if we aim for after the first year, a process to get nominations, and, you know, kind of a list together of what we might do for planning awards since the last one we had, and we aim for an event or a presentation in April or so, then the outcomes of that could be included in the final pretty planning report that goes out on top of the state stuff that's required. I'd all sort of, I think, would then not cram it all into a too tight a timeframe, but would all lay out nicely together. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Only, the only good time to know is to maybe do it in May, because taking pictures of buildings in February and March is not a good idea.
Yeah, great point, so, yeah. That's still plenty of time to get a presentation.
I mean, we can still look at stuff, but when we do the awards, we want to have a nice picture.
Yeah, that's a great point. So maybe we could tentatively schedule a category and general framework by February?
Well, we can do categories and stuff in January and start, because that takes a lot of time to figure that out.
Okay.
And then, and then give you a list of ones, and you can be looking at them, we can, but we want to, you know, kind of have a decision made so that we can go out and, well, we like to photograph it so that you can look at it.
But at the very least, good final photos for the presentation, sure.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I forgot. I did want to bring up, Trudy, help me out, the street, what's the name of the street that's right in front of downtown Crown, right outside of?
Fields Road?
That's Fields, that is still Fields Road, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and there's a lot going on there with a lot of barrels and all kinds of things, and it gets a little dicey over there. Can somebody take a look and make sure, no, seriously, you know, direction and that kind of thing, because it just looks like there might be a little situation waiting to happen, the way it's, the barrels and wave, the signage is right now. Could maybe someone from the city take a look at that?
Okay, there is a very strict phasing plan that the county has, because that's a county road.
That's a county road, okay.
And they're doing the permitting and the inspections for that, so, but Ollie and Ollie Mum Power and Rob Robinson are fully aware of that.
Okay, it's just that when you come up, when you make that left turn off of, I guess, St. Ike, and then I guess if you want to go straight, and it says left turn, I mean, it's just a little confusing, that's all. Thanks.
Okay. We'll be there forever like that.
No, no, yes, yes, it's hope.
Okay, we're, we're on.
So, Mr. Chair, as far as the annual planning report, the 2014 that you have in front of you, do you have some changes you'd like us to make, or?
Honestly, no.
Oh, I thought it was-
I think you should post it and put a little announcement up on the Right Landing page for the website, and include it in the next In Gaithersburg update.
I think it looks great.
Yeah, it looks fantastic.
Perfect.
Nice work.
And again, I give a lot of credit to Greg and Kurt and others who have put that together for us.
And came together nicely. It's great to be able to point to this, too, for folks that are asking about what's going on in the city for development, have it all in place like that.
Great. So the record could safely say consensus of the planning commission does support the-
Support the document.
Yes.
I'd say so. We have a consensus here.
Three nods.
Well, that's all it takes.
So Trudy, you seem to be positioning yourself now for the presentation.
I am. On the second page of the agenda, it has the planning commission meeting date and submission calendar. In accordance with Section 8C.2 of the planning commission's rules of procedure, we are to bring you the calendar before the year begins. And so, Miriam has worked very hard to make sure that we have all the deadlines, and we are presenting this calendar to you that you received at the day as, we had a spelling error on the one that was posted, but we fixed that. And so, this is one version, there's two versions, there's the calendar version, and then we have a chart version. So, this is for applicants to submit to the planning commission, to submit to staff to bring a plan for your review.
Okay. In the net effect, we looked at this, I think, a year or so ago, how-
About three months ago.
It was only three months ago, huh?
Well, it was after the rules changed in July, so.
Yeah, and how this was gonna be calculated, and I think in the end, we decided it works, and it also keeps it about as quickly, as quick a turnaround as one could expect for this process.
And Mr. Chair, I might add that in the rules and procedures that were amended, there is the ability for the planning department staff to basically move things faster if we feel that we can do it, or to take things longer. So I think we want to be clear that these are, you know, the guidelines and suggested, but if we have an occasion where, you know, something's super simple, and we'd like to, you know, and we can meet the legal deadlines for posting and those types of things. Or conversely, if the application's just not in good enough shape, and, you know, staff has other things to review, and it's just not gonna be feasible to give it a good review, these timelines may get pushed back, so.
Okay. And I meant to check, double-check this, but we're still doing just one meeting in August, one meeting in December, is that what?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good. Do you need something from us in this, or is it just a?
I think we probably do need-
Consensus approval.
We have three nods?
The record reflects that.
Three nods.
Three thumbs up.
Nods noted.
Okay.
Note the nods.
Three nods denied.
And, now I have to go back tonight.
Okay.
Actually, I don't. On October 29th and 30th, I believe, the Saturday?
Yes, yes.
There is that Maryland Department of Planning thing. We did not get an email from anyone about wanting to go as promised.
Oh, yes.
But we do need to register you if you do want to go, and that's two-day, and it's at the Maritime Museum, which is in Lentikum Heights, right near the BWI.
The airport.
It's right near the crab cake place, that's the most important thing.
It's G and M.
G and M. Are you, do you know, I mean, does it have to be two days? Like, can you go for a day? Is that an allowable framework?
Right. If you go for one day, it might not even be charged, but.
So maybe we can look at the agenda, take a look, is there a deadline for registration?
Yes.
Yeah, it was an early bird thing.
I think it passed already.
That's, yeah.
We might have passed the early bird thing.
Yeah, it was naughty.
Well, look at the, look at the agenda, try to do it today, or next couple of days, maybe before the end of the week.
Oh, I'm going.
You should be comped.
Let Trudy know. Sorry about that for not following up earlier.
And our next meeting is scheduled for October 21st, and then we have a meeting November 4th.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
And I think we need, just if you all could confirm your attendance for that.
Okay.
We'd appreciate that.
Via email.
Yeah. Miriam will remind you to-
Are we then?
We don't know.
Okay.
Jeez.
I have a call with you.
Okay, we'll respond.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Trudy?
That's it.
Thank you. Anything over there, guys, or good? Greg, thanks for sticking around?
Yeah.
All right, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.